Anyway, it is seven o'clock, so we will call meeting to order. Uh additions to the agenda, does anybody have any? Any here none, somebody wish to move the agendas presented, La? Any question on La's motion, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, then moving on to the minutes. Any questions on any of the minutes that? On July the 9th? Okay, George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'd like to skip number four in case Bob does come. And we'll just move on to correspondence. If that's okay? Okay, we'll move on to the Clarus Home Invitation to the Parade. So it's on August the 11th.
So will you be riding a horse, is that what you have to sign?
I don't think so, I mean, I have ridden a horse lots in my life, but I don't think I'll be riding a horse. But, uh, you know, I think we, I mean, it's nice that they have sent us an invitation, but hopefully next year we'll be ready to go with our float and...
We can send them the letter that we've been sending everybody.
Does that sound fair, somebody wish to move that we send them a letter, thank you. Lorna, sorry? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the the AUMA meeting with the President.
Is this something new, have presidents in the past ever done this?
I don't think anybody has.
You haven't had this again?
I think it's kind of neat, I mean, you know, we could invite the county, but I don't, you know, the county has much to do with the AUMA, but sometimes it doesn't hurt. I'm not sure, you know, they want us to invite the villages or?
Uh, they're basically just setting it out there for you to set up whatever you would like, you basically have the one and a half hours that he's here in the community, so really you could start with opening the council chambers here.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great opportunity, I'm not sure if you've ever met Barry or, you know, like, I mean, maybe at the AUMA conference you might have seen him right up there and talked. He is really quite a nice gentleman to visit with. He's from Brooks and, um, he was, I think he's been on council in Brooks for quite a few years and I, I think we should, you know, do it here and...
And it says in here, if you want to let the, you know, county come, there's smaller villages. Should we send a letter to the smaller villages?
I think it'd be kind.
Send, send out an invitation to, uh...
Yeah, if the county didn't want to attend, I could see why, but I think maybe the smaller villages would be nice.
Just direct administration to, do you want to put it on here or would you prefer to do it?
I don't know, what do you think? I, I don't think there'll be, I don't think we're gonna have a big crowd, you know?
If we give them, just extend the invitation, if they show up, great, if they don't, at least be...
No, no, but do we want to host it here or do you want to go over to the lodge hall or? I don't know how many people show up, I, I can't imagine, you know, we'll get an awful lot, but...
We can, we can set up coffee and whatnot in the committee room and use this room here, so, fine?
Sure.
Sure. Somebody wish to move that we do that?
Director Administration to do that?
George Lee, please let me Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? So if we're gonna really vote on this with the i-Campus, how do you, it must have a different screen?
No, they, they're, they put the tab in there for you for, uh... This is very preliminary.
Oh, okay.
Your stuff on the split screen is going to change with an RFD with recommendations and
Oh, okay.
So for every item, we can actually put a motion in there.
Oh, okay.
Or recommended action and then when you vote on it, and if you did decide that you wanted to do voting with your, uh, with your tablets, then it would record the voting that way.
The advantage I see of, you know, publicly doing it is it does show us on our recording. If you do electronically, I mean, unless they're really pretty good at figuring out which, which click you made. Not that it's...
Yeah, and one of the things, uh, eventually, looking at the video recording, it also ties directly to events for this stuff.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to financial report, the cash statement.
Can we do a motion to accept the correspondence?
Auto correspondence. Somebody wish to move, Lorna? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the cash statement in June 30th.
So publicly, I'm probably in the same place we're supposed to be, and do I trust you?
Well, I certainly hope so, because there's about 1.5 million dollars sitting in our accounts. Hope so, we've, uh...
Far cry from 58 million.
That's right. The majority of the notice on demands are from, of course, taxation being due at the end of June, so majority of that funds we put into notice on demand accounts so that we can draw on it for, for the rest of the year for, for budget expenses.
Okay, is there any question on any line items on that cash statement? Somebody wish to file that one? Lyle? Any question on La's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the next one, which is the year-to-date statement pending the June 30th. Again, this is the one that's generally easier to see how we...
Page where you're at?
Yes, page where you're at, that's a good, good line.
Just a general question, does our year end, is it the calendar year?
Yes, yes, December 31st.
And yet, like, uh, although the school does, they, they, they do, we do give them four quarters, don't we, don't?
Four quarters?
Yes.
We, we have several things now, that a lot of the things have gone to quarterly installments, so even, even the county, our revenue and our expenses to them go quarterly. We have, uh, of the, you see that we have about a million dollars outstanding, but that's, of course, the utilities and those sort of things, we're only halfway through the year for water, sewer, garbage. Majority of the costs are through there, and we're, as you're very well aware, we're right into the heavy months of using water and so if it's, if it remains this way until October, we'll have fairly high expenses for water.
I'm quite surprised at how many of the categories, when it's, it halfway through the year is halfway through the budget too, which is really good.
It is.
Is there a significant financial impact in terms of, like George Lee was saying, for the first time last week, we had to actually return chemicals because they weren't used for the water? Does that have a big financial effect, or is that kind of?
But that's the Water Commission.
That's their project?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's not, I mean, you look like...
Runs on its own entity and they just bill us per cubic meter of water that we purchase. So the more, the drier the year, the more water that people use, the higher our expenses because we have to pay the commission and we have to our, in our budget, we guess at what that number's gonna be based on historical data. So sometimes we guess we're gonna be really close.
The only difference is that theoretically our revenue should go up.
Our revenue follows suit with that because we know homeowner's exactly what we get charged, so that's one of the things, you'll see a variance in the budget, but it, it equalizes itself because the expenses and revenue should match. Other than our parks and a few of the municipal buildings that are included in that.
How close do we bill out the water on the sunblock?
Fairly close, okay, it's all metered.
Yeah, well, that's good.
It's all metered now and keep pretty good track of it.
Okay, any other questions on any other categories on the? Somebody wish to move? Lorna, thank you.
Scared everybody with your story.
We're all voting, so whether you make the motion or vote, they say vote.
Do we want a motion to file or?
No, no, those are good.
Oh, and by the way, that they, they recouped out of the 58 million, they recouped around, just around 50 million.
Wow.
Okay, moving on to new and unfinished businesses, FCSs.
FCSs followed their protocol of, uh, appointing, so they, I included the bylaw stuff so that you did have some background because they haven't asked for a reappointment of, uh, of their members-at-large in quite some time, so they're asking for four. The only thing that I would like to mention on a side to counsel is that if you appoint all four of them for three-year terms, they will all expire at the same time, so... But they do have a possible seven members-at-large that they can appoint, so this is only four of them. You could encourage FCSs to appoint another three, if you'd like.
Like a big board then?
It does, 12 is the maximum number that that board can have.
And the bad thing about it too, like Kim says, is that, you know, if they all daylight their
The same time.
Same time, you know, and most of them try to fulfill their commitment to, I'm sure, so... But that's a request that they have made to us, so all we're doing is fulfilling their request.
Because the town is the managing partner of the FCSs, you guys as council have to appoint their members-at-large, so...
On section two of the bylaw, it's written... I just wondered what that means that you wrote, someone wrote it on the side?
Oh.
Oh, so that was on the amendment, so that was what the old, their five, the, the board consists of five elected officials appointed by each member, so they can be elected, in most cases they're elected official, but municipality can appoint whoever they would like. So then the four was the members-at-large and they amended it in 2007 so that they could go from nine to 12 members. So if you go to the original bylaw, and that's why I highlighted it, this is the original bylaw that has nine, and I need you to be aware that it had been bumped to 12, so...
Members-at-large, M A L, I, that's what threw me off.
Oh, okay.
You need to have five M A Ls and...
Those taxes here.
Had to check.
So they could probably say next year, appoint three other people, and then they would have a little bit of a balance.
Yes, and, and basically going back to, uh, FCSs came a few years ago and said they were having a lot of trouble getting people to quorum. For our members that do sit on FCSs, I did have the conversation with George Lee when you got on the board, that the villages and the county can appoint whoever they like, so if they're having trouble getting one of their councillors, which makes sense if there's only three of them, for them to attend all the meetings is pretty hard. FCSs is one of those ones where it doesn't, they don't have to be an elected official, but they do have to be appointed by that group, so... So, you know, if you're talking to somebody from Champion, Carmengay, Mylwell, Erlewood, that they, that their councillors do have trouble making it to the meetings, talk to them about it because they can appoint that person if they do have interest of sitting on, on board, so... And of course, they also have the three extra member-at-large positions that...
Okay, any thoughts or thought? Somebody wish to move, make the first motion? Lorna? Any question on Lorna's motion, approve?
If I, if I can mention, it, it doesn't, you want them for the whole term, the four-year?
Yes.
Or three-years, sorry?
Three.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's perfect.
Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Need a motion for Betty Whitney? George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, to appoint the Linda Joyce, La? Any question on La's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. And the fourth and final one, Jen Formchway. Laura?
No, go ahead.
Okay, there you go. George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to the next one, unfinished business is the South Grove Commitment to Site Selection, pending market data program.
Sounds like a win-win for her.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was really good, but because it's a three-year commitment, they just basically want something in writing saying that will actually put the manpower to it, take the training and actually put the resources to actually make it successful.
Is that an issue with?
No, uh, as, as I put in there, I talked to Nancy and she's more than willing to take the training, uh, because of course, from a development side, although the development officer is not an economic development officer, she's usually the first point of contact, so this helps point in the right direction and had, make sure that the information we're providing to this database is accurate and up to date, so she said she'd be more than willing to take the training.
Okay, so, any question, other questions on this? If not, somebody wish to file, please. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to appointment to the board directors.
This was already done at your org meeting, but they just want reconfirmation that we would like to stay with, or appoint somebody new, but Lorna has indicated that she...
I would give you the lie.
Indicated that she would let her name stand for that, so... If we put a motion number, it gives us something that they can put on file.
Okay.
Thank you.
La moves that we appoint Lorna, who's done it for the last eight months? Or nine months, any question on La's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, Public Information Engagement Comments.
So, I met with Council Roddy after the public engagement, she was good enough to take notes on all of the comments that were made from the 30 people that attended, and she put together this document. Put it forward for you guys' information and basically now to provide feedback.
And Kim had said that you had said there was a couple people that want a written response to some of the questions, is it, or?
Uh, well, there was just two people that requested, like, just a responsive phone call or some kind of, just follow-up, let them know. Otherwise, that was the only callback, so to speak, that anybody requested. I did just want to say, you know, thank you very much again to everybody that was able to make it out. I cannot tell you how appreciative I am of that, and that was really fantastic, so...
I have something to say, and I don't have my purse here tonight, but I think Michelle picked up a tab and I don't think that should. So I'd be glad to contribute to it, and I think Paul did.
Yeah, Paul did, and that's, and it's...
It was a fair chunk of change, so...
It's totally, completely worth it to have 29 people come in, that kind of engagement, I thought that was really good turnout.
So, so it's easy for me to say since I have no money with me.
Is that saying the thought accounts?
Yeah, that's true, that's, and but thank you for doing that, because I just...
Well, I don't know, what do you, um...
So based on...
Well, I don't know, what do you, um...
So based on the, on the conversation that Michelle and I had putting this information together, the fact that only two people asked for a response, based on those, I can work with Michelle to, if council wants to give direction for administration to respond to, with, for their questions. Michelle obviously wrote them down, so she knows which ones they are specifically, and, yeah, other than that, the majority of the comments are, there's as many positive as, as can be seen as negative for sure, so...
I would say, I think the thing I heard the most was signage, whether it be speed, street signs, whatever, that seemed to be a concern for most people, and I do agree, it is kind of hard to know where the campground is, and, um, the police on the Conamera Elizabeth Street.
Yeah, and we have no control over Elizabeth Street.
And I tried to tell them that, and I think they know that, but I think they just wanted it brought up.
And signage in town, you know, that has been brought up for years, I mean, um, back when the signs, some of the signs that were originally built or made were made when we had Summer Ames, and then when we had the 100th anniversary, there was some funds, you know, thought that might go into signage, but signage is not a cheap process, and then also, you know, the bad thing about signage is what, where we think it should go is not where other people think it should go to, you know? Like that one into that cul-de-sac is a concern, you know, we've tried to address that every year and...
The no-exits signs moved twice, you know, to different locations, trying to...
And then the other thing that we have problems with sometimes, sometimes with signage too is, you know, we, we appreciate the people, you know, they look after their boulevard, but they believe that the boulevard is theirs and a sign shouldn't go out in front of their property that says where something is, so some of them do have issues when you do place a sign on a boulevard. But again, you know, we understand that there is a need for, and that's one thing that we should probably put into our, if we do have a strategic planning session this fall, or spring, you know, something that we should talk about is signage, you know, because there's a, there is a cost factor to that one. And, and again, it doesn't mean that we can't petition the government, you know, um, back, it was so much easier back when 534 or Elizabeth Street or the Conamera, or, you know, whatever you want to call it, back in the day when the county owned it or looked after it, it was easy to convince them that we should have it 30 from one end to the other, or a playground zone from one end to the other, or a school zone from one end to the other. But now with the government, they have their rules and their philosophies of why they want it the way it is, and it's pretty hard to convince them to change their philosophy, it's not saying we can't try, but...
So, one of the things that council may consider doing with this list is, you guys have all had a chance to go through it, we can keep it as a document of things that were talked about at that meeting, and one thing that I suggest is that we also distribute it to the department heads because there are suggestions on there that they will be able to, you know, will keep in mind and things that we can bring forward as, as initiatives to try to address some of the concerns, and then it can be also reviewed at the next strategic plan. Be a, be a good way of making sure that it stays a live document that we're, that we're trying to work on, and then the next time you do engagement, basically just update it and keep working on it.
And unfortunately, you know, like, you know, um, on, on some of these questions and issues, I wasn't, I was only there for about an hour and a half or hour that one day, but I've got to check and put names on most of those questions and I'll pick out...
I don't think you were, eh?
Who they are, which isn't so bad, it's obviously a burning concern for them. They have given up on talking to me and they have found other people that will write them down, so, which isn't such a bad thing, but...
I just have a quick note, I had a lady in the store today who said this was a really great idea, and to let everybody know that she is all for golfers being able to drive their golf carts to the golf course.
That's excellent.
Pass it on the amendment.
That's excellent, that's a provincial statute that we are not allowed to change.
We have dealt with 100,000 times already.
Yes, well, she referenced somewhere out of B C I, didn't have a chance after work to check on, but I just said I would pass on the info.
For, for the new ones that haven't heard the speech before, golf carts on public roadways in Alberta is a provincial statute, you're not allowed. It's just plain and simple. We are fortunate, in, in Alberta, some communities are fortunate enough, the RCMP overlook it, and others they enforce it, so... That one's a pretty straightforward one, so if, based on your conversations, if you'd like to give direction, you can direct administration to respond to the residents that request, uh, requested uh, sorry, response, and then to distribute the list to the department heads and for it to be brought forward, again, the strategic planning for review.
Just as a quick aside, to wrap it up, one thing, um, like the following weekend from that, in the grocery store, I was actually stopped by six different people, five of which said, you know, just came over, commented and said, it was great to be able to actually see people and have just that opportunity to chat and give feedback, and three of them also said, you know, like, Kim asked, well, but what are you guys gonna do it next time, and is this gonna be, you know, like a couple times a year sort of thing, and, um, also, three ladies were from one of the banks had mentioned, you know, that they would have loved to have gone, but unfortunately, working kind of the Monday to Friday, 8 to 4:30, it didn't really mesh with what we were doing, so just something to think about if council does decide to do it again. Maybe just taking into consideration when we're trying to go with the hours of it, but, yeah, it's amazing how many people have stopped either the grocery store or various places around town, just saying like, hey, that was really awesome, thank you guys so much for doing it, and yeah, so just as an aside, we got a ton of really positive, um, feedback.
And like some of them on here, you know it's a problem, but how do you fix it, like the littering of cigarette butts? Like you see them everywhere, but how do you enforce?
Well, the thing is too is, or do you see them everywhere?
With cigarette butts?
Yes.
I see a lot when I'm walking.
Well, I, I walk, ride bike every day, a lot of, you know, rides and walks lots too, and, and, you know, if you think our community's bad, you know, other communities have issues, if not worse, I, I don't know how you deal with them.
George Lee?
It's a good comment.
From a town perspective, we try to, by just doing our, our maintenance, right? And having, having the street sweeper out there, you guys have done your part with that, a lot of communities, they, they contract out their street sweeping, so they only get it done twice a year, where we actually own a street sweeper, so we can do it a little bit more frequently, so, you know, and some of those are great.
Like the cigarette butts being like on the boulevard, like where the grass is.
But that's just, you have to hope that's littering and, and do people do that with their papers and whatnot, yes?
And, and boulevards are for the, uh, for the property owners to maintain, so...
Yeah, yeah, and that's it, that's it with green.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's pretty difficult.
Yeah, no, there are some, like you said, some ones that, you know, we hear on a yearly basis, I mean, I mean, there, and we, we will go back to it in a bit to, to discuss, you know, the comment about water rates or water, you know, I mean, the one for just Whispering Creek, it doesn't, I mean, Elizabeth, oh, sorry.
The Whispering Greens water on the docks.
Right, I mean, it, it doesn't just affect them, it affects anybody that, you know, is gonna shut off their water.
You shut the water off, there's a $35 charge, and then a lot of people don't mind that when they're going away for the winter. The problem they have is the town used to do it for free. So, and now we charge for it, and the reason why we charge for it is, of course, we're paying guys to go out and do that, so, and we're just recuperating, recuperating costs of doing that.
Council can decide that they're gonna, you know, if somebody's fortunate enough to be able to go away for six months in a year, whether they live in Whispering Creek or they live anywhere in the town of Oakland, to, for us to observe that and have the other, rest of the taxpayers pick that up. That's a choice that we can do if we so desire. I think it's a budgetary item, so I think that it's something we should discuss at the budget, but, you know, it is an item that was raised and a concern. Same with the comment or the question about us paying for the majority of the fire truck. You know, if we wouldn't have entered into an agreement, we'd have paid 100% of the fire truck, so we got off, um... fire truck, so we got off, so, a better, better deal, so whoever. And some of them, some of these questions that were asked, if they would have showed up at the public meeting that we had, some of them would have been addressed, but, you know, only two of the taxpayers came to that event, only 30 of the taxpayers came to this two-day event. So, you know, I think we have to weigh it all and say, you know, what can we do to attract more or attract anybody, I guess.
Food.
By, by dinner.
Yeah, you mentioned, there is that.
Yeah, coffee, snacks, bet you tripled, you don't at least say snacks though.
Optimism being the key. But yeah, no, and one, one other thing that I did want to mention is, you know, if, to Michelle's point of council looking at doing this again, it might be something that council consider before strategic planning, so that some of the stuff is fresh and you take the comments in, you do your strategic planning, you come back out, you address the public with how you were before, it may, may give some good feedback.
And perhaps if they've come out to an event like this, they might be more inclined to come to our town meeting next year because they might find it not quite so scary or whatever reason is that they don't come.
Well, and I brought all the leftover copies of the document that my ministry had been put together for our town hall, and it was six or seven, I ended up handing out through the thing because, you know, people had questions about, hey, well, why is, why do we allocate, you know, so much for this or where exactly do taxes go or stuff like that? Or, you know, what projects are the town priority? And it was perfect because it had all the budgets in there and then right on the back it had all of our strategic planning for our five-year plan. So it was super, super handy. And yeah, I was really surprised at how many people actually said like, hey, can I please take this? And it's like, absolutely. Quick question with, and that was one thing that I think was pretty consistently brought up too is the potholes. When you first come down Main Street, is this something that we have a problem with kind of every year, like is that fairly consistent?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's an ongoing, every winter we have movement, we, it's based on where we live, towards the frost coming in and out of the road. Asphalt, potholes are a concern everywhere. The way we deal with it, the reason why it took a little bit longer this year to get done is we were actually waiting on tacking oil and the material. We use tacking oil and Q P R. And the reason why we use the tacking oil is we can make that Q P R last for several more years than, than just putting in cold mix by itself, so. And at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the entrance, they're going to do that experimental one there. So, yeah, it's, last year, and it was consistent throughout, so and over, last year was really hard on asphalt throughout the province, so, and it was based on that amount of snow all winter, so.
Sorry, and what is the experimenting you were saying was?
The entrance, right when you could pull into Vulcan in front of the, the flags at the front entrance, there's a valve that's in there and the area is, there's about three or four really decent-sized potholes that really, really catch vehicles when they come into town. Where we've talked about digging it out and relaying asphalt in there, but we're going to try an experimental product in there and they're going to do it for free. So we're going to try it. If it doesn't work, we're not out anything, and if it does.
And that, that's another one that would have, if the provincial government would have paved Highway 23, which was on their schedule for this year but got bumped, that would have.
It would have been fixed with that.
Would have been fixed. So it was one of those ones where, you know, you, do you spend, you know, thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money from our community, whether it's going to be just ripped up and redone by another group, so.
We, we tried to coordinate that work and it is, Highway 23, the rate, the overlay is scheduled for 2019 now, and you may get questions. They're also looking at the entrances to Petrocamp when they do that overlay, so we've been trying to coordinate that and make sure we're all on the same page. That includes.
Do you mean a road open or Petrocamp?
Yes, we, yes, we do.
Now, it's, it's part, it's a kind of a strange of where that line is, where it's theirs and where it's ours, but yeah, that road is ours, that serves.
The dotted line and the driving lanes are the towns to maintain. But depending on the day you go out there, you can never see the dotted line or, because people park wherever they like.
Well, big tractor parked there.
Yeah, so, but for terms of definition, for us to maintain, yes, it's the two driving lanes and the dotted line, so.
Okay, so I think we've had a bit of discussion on that and Kim's got a kind of a motion made up if somebody wishes to, do you want to read the motion?
Yeah, just to direct administration to re-respond to the residents that requested a response and to distribute the list to the department heads and to review during the next strategic planning session.
Okay, Michelle Moza.
It will look prettier when it's written down up here.
Okay, any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, moving on to community reports. They're created by the minutes, though both of them were clean and announced, but the one was from April 26th. Any questions on those motions or those minutes, I should say, sorry? This must have been their A G M, April 26th. Doesn't say, but it lasted from 10:00 a.m. till five something or six. Long meeting in the way.
Except ropes fire, so it must have been a board.
It's just a regular board.
Board meeting.
Yeah, it ended at 4:15, so that would, you know, six-hour meeting. So any comments or questions on this one? Okay, then what about the May 14th minutes? So there's a conference call, I should say, and it was only an hour long. Okay, any comments? None, somebody wished to make the committee reports? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, and moving on to councillors, since Mr. Taylor isn't here. Georgie.
I was at the Grateful Cup with the girls for the wonderful day and then I had to leave a bit early on the Friday for Calgary, but it was interesting, I thought it was good, thought it was a good journey. And that's all I have, no other case.
Okay, any questions for Georgie Lee? No, okay, move on to Laura.
I had no committee meetings and unfortunately, I had first day training, both the only two days of the week, the same days that we were scheduled for the Grateful Cup. I still think that was a fantastic idea, but unfortunately, I couldn't make it, so.
You were there in spirit, I'm sure.
And we got loads of positive comments online as well, so on social media.
Oh, did we? Sounds good. Okay, moving on to Laura.
I didn't have any committee meetings either. I had to be at the store for the Grateful Cup. I was there by myself the Friday, so there was no way I could leave. And I'm sure we've had an invite to be in the parade for Vulcan, I'm sure I saw that somewhere, but I was supposed to say that Corey stopped at the store today and said we had been formally invited because she wasn't sure what had happened.
You actually made motion at the last council meeting.
When you said parade, but no, I don't when it is, but what time is it?
Nine thirty on Saturday.
So we should be there what time?
It says on the, the calendar of events things, that everyone gets together at nine, raise at nine thirty.
Oh, so I should go there.
Well. It's easier a little bit late to get out until nine fifteen. If, depending on where you're walking down Paint Street, you could join in halfway.
Yeah, it's true. And I may have to, because I then may ask, so I don't know.
Does it start at the same place as?
No, it starts at.
At the tourism.
Tourism center. Okay, any questions for her? Hearing none, we'll move on to councillor Ellie.
Um, at the engagement on the 12th and 13th, um, at the engagement on the 12th and 13th, which I didn't, I was nowhere online that we got a lot of feedback there too, but that's really awesome. So that was definitely very interesting and I think worked well. And like I said, I can't say enough how much I appreciate everyone that was able to make it out, that did. On the 17th, I had the V C C C R Committee for Elder Abuse meeting and it was going through the, and setting the vision and mission statement for the organization and all of the terms of reference, as well as now it's kind of being brought forth of increasing the meeting time just because it's so, like we've got a year timeline and trying to actually keep with that because it's so content-heavy and it is still apparently a new organization, so that's kind of where we're at. And that's it.
Okay, any questions for, or for councillor? Okay, moving on to Nora.
Hey, I was at the public open house coffee meeting. And also I went on behalf of Paul to the golf course meeting. The Dusty and Kathy Rhodes Benefit Memorial Golf Turnout was, I'm gonna say not last Saturday, but Saturday before, I don't remember the date, they had a good turnout, they had a good response, lots of kids involved. They have about 35 trees on the golf course that have to be replaced. And so now there's, I guess they don't have a program in place where they have money for if one tree goes, you put another one in, so they're looking into setting up a policy for that because this winter was pretty hard on a lot of the trees and a lot of the trees are all getting to be the same age. I think golf course was from either 54 or 56, so we're looking at what, 60 years, so most of those poplars are biting the dust. They're still working on the three-horse golf course plans and the cost, and they have a new bookkeeper that I, they seem quite excited about. Well, I think that was all, Paul said I didn't have to take any notes because it would all come out, but it didn't this time because they didn't have, Tyler wasn't there to take minutes, so someone else did and I guess they didn't get them out, so I, I didn't really take copious notes, which I probably should have this time, but it was quite interesting.
Okay. Anything for Laura? Okay, I had an executive meeting for SEWA here in Vulcan on the Friday of the open house, and so that's one reason why I wasn't able to partly attend, but they're still hoping to have the A G M in September. They're doing another, this will be the third writing campaign to ministers of the present government to see if we can even get them to acknowledge that we exist. And I think, you know, if they don't hereby, the, the kind of, on this one, they sent out with a letter they sent us, there's kind of a drop dead date, if we don't, you know, we're going to release this information to the public and, and how about me with all the M L As in the province of Alberta, and I think you'll see an election event. So, see what happens with that. Other than that, that was pretty well it for me.
So when is the deadline?
August 31st.
That they have to respond by?
Yep, and then, then we're gonna.
Release it.
Yeah, we're gonna release it to the public and then we're also going to have invitation, we're gonna phone every M L A and say, here's this information package, if you're interested. And, I mean, it seems strange that, you know, city Calgary reduces their greenhouse gases on the green line by 100,000 tons and we're gonna do 700,000 million, or 700, yeah, million tons and we don't even get, you know, kiss off or have a good day, so, obviously it's not who you know, it's the rest of it, so.
So is any, anyone from SEWA, like, or you're still working on setting up meetings to go see the minister away either?
Yeah, we're trying to set up a meet with the ministers. There is a saying that if you want to overthrow the king, make sure you've got enough people in your court. We don't want to overthrow the king, we want to just have a meeting with the king or some of their squires. None of them seem to be interested in meeting with us, so. But I think, you know, it could be a pretty good political ball if you wanted to use it that way. Right at the moment, we're trying to work with the government to say that, hey, this is a project that's got merit, you know, 63 municipalities went together together to create this information.
So especially since Environment Green is, is the mandate sort of of the time.
But the mandate of the time is that they believe that within a few years, we will not have waste, you know, which is like saying that, you know, the fairies are going to come and visit us tonight and, you know, bring that pot of gold because the rainbow was over us, which is, you know, is another fallacy or, you know, larger fallacy than than coming up with the idea that we're not going to have waste, because I mean, I don't know, I mean, sure, we're going to eliminate straws soon, you know, which is going to be going to help the environment substantially because our straws that we throw in the garbage here into the ocean off the B C coast, you know, I'm not sure where they, how they know where they come from, but they do know that, so. Do they, maybe they go by the DNA or something off the straw?
Just thinking, this might be something good, once again, if the chamber gets up and running again in the fall, chambers get together in Edmonton with M L As and this could be something that a chamber person could take up there.
Yeah, and there has been a question too, is that, you know, is this something that, you know, us as municipalities should have a meeting with the ministers at the A U M A conference, but you, you have to kind of tell them what they're, you're going in there for, and I guarantee you, if you tell them what they're going in for, you won't get a meeting with them on this. It's been pretty well months, the word, you know, we're hoping that, you know, it's just, you know, the other 15 letters that we've sent, you know, were worth the straws, you know, made it up to the coast, so we're hoping that maybe this budget will.
So which ministers are you trying to talk to? Environment?
Environment, Environment, Transportation, oh, the ministers, the, let's see, Shay Anderson, the Minister of Urban, Municipal Affairs. Who else was there?
Darren Bellis.
Darren Bellis was another one.
The economic development.
Development, and so there was about seven ministers.
Shalen Phillips.
What is she?
Environment. And, and then also they, we have got a couple of letters into the, to the handler for the, for the premier over it. So we haven't gone to any opposition yet. We, you know, we still believe that it's only fair to take it to, to the ministers first and give them an opportunity to hear the spiel first. Anyway, any other questions for me? Okay, somebody wish to move the councillors' reports? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, administrator's report.
Action.
Action list first. Any questions on? Any of that? Okay. No questions, no comments? Okay, we'll move on to the C E O report.
So you've all had a chance to, to read through it. We did interview three applicants for the C P O position, made an offer on Friday and accepted and signed today, so we're starting the process with the solicitor general, find So we're starting the process with the Solicitor General to find out, because of course his employment will be pending approval from the Solicitor General for being a peace officer. So we're gonna go through that process, and it's important today that it could take anywhere from five to eight weeks. So having said that, we've scheduled him to start working in a bylaw capacity for August 13th. He wanted to give appropriate time to his current employer, which I respect with him. So he's going to do that. He stopped by today, we ran through some things. He's out of Lethbridge, so he'll be commuting. His, his family is in Lethbridge, so, and he has, without getting too far into it, they're being trenched in there for the time being, but does have a small town background. And right now, we're very hopeful that he'll be here for a while because he, that's currently where he wants his career to be, is in a small town, so. So we're hoping that good things from him. He's, we'll bring him in, hopefully, depending on how things go. Because his first day is August 13th, it kind of aligns with the council meeting, so we'll bring him in for introductions and to meet everybody that needs.
So has he been working as a peace officer?
No. He was 11 years as a commercial vehicle enforcement, which has exactly the same training. So that's why he can be appointed without redoing the training. But his baton, yeah, all the weapons stuff, OC spray, baton, that sort of stuff is outdated, so he needs to get that stuff up to date. And, yeah, he's, he wants to get back into, into a municipal atmosphere, but he seems very interested in the byline of things and municipal enforcement. So based on our interviews with the other candidates, he, he fit what council discussed when you, when we discussed what you were looking for in continuing our program. So we're very hopeful we have a good candidate.
Okay, Michelle, a question?
When can his name be released, or is that, like, I'm not sure in terms of, I know you mentioned that everything was signed today, but is there probably more steps for?
We won't do anything, and this is just, just for here now. Obviously, we won't release his name until he actually starts, which will be August 13th. He needs time to work through with his employer, we need to get some stuff done with the Solicitor General and that as well. So don't want, if he's not working, we don't want him wandering around our community being asked to do work yet.
Can we say that we have heard?
Yes, well, absolutely. He did sign his offer of employment, so. But again, he doesn't start until the 13th, so.
Which isn't very far from now.
No, no, it's gonna go very quickly, so. Of course, and again, we, we're gonna have to wait for the province to do his appointment, which could take a couple months. I know for a fact that Justin still hasn't got his appointment for the county, and the only reason I know that is because they did reference checks with me today, so.
I know that we've gone through, we've gone through the job posting, is it a three or four year term?
It's open. He's just an employee in the town.
Okay, any other items on your list?
So, yeah, Third Street South Project, you all saw that the, all the sod's been laid, deficiency list has been put, put together, that you're looking at finishing the deficient, completing the deficiency list, no later in the middle of August, and the final lift of asphalt will go on at the end of August. So the grass that's going down, you can see some homeowners are watering it. They don't do it at this point because the contractor had in part of this contract that the grass be established, so they are watering it every day for two weeks to make sure that it, it's established, or they'll replace anything that needs replacing.
Sure can tell where the neighbors or the homeowners have been watering. Looks really good, and there's a couple places where...
Doesn't look as good.
Doesn't look as good, and you can see that, but...
See some of them watering the other night, and he watered a lot of extra lawn.
Yeah.
On each one that we saw. He was very good, like he didn't just do the strip, he did up and around too, so.
So we're currently working through that with, with SEMA. We've also put out the, talked to SEMA about the Jameson Road project, and we did have one of the property owners come in and question how to do the petition. So we're gonna hold off for the 30 days to make sure that they have the ample, ample opportunity. It was just one property owner. And of course, they need two thirds to actually stop the project if they like, but all of our conversations were verbal, so we'll make sure we give them a timeframe to do that. We still feel that we can, if everything goes well, we should still be able to tender this fall, so. The, it's the majority of what's been happening. Of course, if there's any questions about any of the others, just addressing call calls that they come in, interviews, and the CPO research took up a significant amount by last week, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments, or? Okay, thank you. And somebody wish to move to Administrator's reports? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none on the favor. Okay, we'll go back to the item number 401 delegation, since unfortunately Mr. Shear was, didn't attend. Do we wish to just?
And give a brief update on what the concerns were?
Sure, maybe that's about the best way, and then we can decide whether we want to just do nothing or whether we want to respond back to the information that was sent. Anyway.
So Bob came in, he, again, on the property that was discussed last time, one of the utilities shut off, so of course we talked to him about that. And then was concerned about the fee, because the fee, that flat distribution charge stays on whether the water's on or off. And of course, council decided to do that based on the pipes in the ground are out there and we equally distribute the cost for, for that equally amongst our utility accounts. And that, those pipes don't go away, we don't unhook them from the building. If a water break happens out in front of that building, it's, we're still expected to fix it, and that's, that flat fee is what pays for that, for that charge. So I kind of went through that with him. He, I don't want to put words in his mouth, he agreed, but he disagreed because he does not want to pay that for that. And again, we went back to the same thing that we went to with the garbage, that, you know, the only really, the only way on a property to change that, those flat distribution fees and garbage collection fees, or, is to look at rezoning the building for different uses. Or if you have a vacant lot, you can demolish the building. Once you take a demolition permit out, that's windows, and that is set out in, sorry, in your policy in the U1, and his is very specific, under landlord turn on and off fees, that, that we charge the fee, and the water distribution, sewer collection, garbage service charges will continue to be charged during the disconnection period. And again, to go back on that, the reason why council decided to do that is there's a significant amount of money that is involved in operating the distribution system. We took the overall cost of that, equally divided it amongst our, all of our utilities. And when people were going south, people were leaving a building vacant, they were turning it off, not being charged with that, although water breaks were still happening in front of their homes, in front of their businesses, those sort of things. And even though they were gone or the building was empty, then it was on the other taxpayers to cover those costs. So this way, it's even and fair, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you guys remember about the garbage was the same thing. We talked about taking it off of the individual rolls and putting on the assessment. So if you had a building that was worth $4 million, or an assessment that was worth, you know, $4 million, you paid substantially more for garbage pickup. If we did the same with this, it followed the same category. So the people that, you know, have kept up their property and are willing to, to improve that piece of property, that still has water and sewer to it, so, if that's, that still has water and sewer to it. So if that's the direction that council wishes to go, we can do the same thing. We can do a study if we want, which would take, you know, of paperwork and, paperwork and, and, you know, by the administration. Or we can follow our rules and policies that we just approved last year. Again, the one seems to be fairer than the other to the majority of them, but, you know, when you run into a situation like, you know, this happens to the odd lot that is empty or vacant, it doesn't look fair.
And so when you were dealing with the fair or not fair, basically put that grandfather rule in. Any utility account that was currently inactive will remain so until such time as the property owner requests that the account be reactivated and the water service reconnected. Water distribution, sewer collection, garbage services will at that time be reinstated on an ongoing basis. So what that did is you can see that it was, this policy was amended into in November of 2016. So you had a bunch of snowbirds that were down south that weren't paying. So as soon as they got home, that clause accounted for the water to go back on and for it to continue with that from that point forward. The other, and this is the one that pertains to Bob that he doesn't agree with, and which is why he was coming to council, is that a utility account will only be considered for inactivation upon receiving notification of the intent, attendant structural change to the property. This change is limited to demolition or redevelopment of the main structure. Utility account will not be placed inactive until the appropriate demolition or development permit has been approved. In the case of demolition, the utility account will remain inactive until such time as new development permit has been issued. So that covered off on, somebody demolishing a building, leaving it as an empty lot, then yes, it doesn't because it gets taken off of our garbage collection, that sort of thing. In Bob's case, he could redevelop and take a redevelopment of that, and we mentioned that with the garbage. You know, take it down from four to three, or to two, or, and that argument for the garbage remains the same with the water. So that's, that's the gist of it. He was going to come to council. We put it on the agenda. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend this evening.
So I'm not sure what your thoughts are, but...
This kind of reminds me of one of the points on Michelle's list that someone brought up, the coffee meeting, is that, you know, when a street's done, the whole town should pay for the street being, kind of, just not that street. This is kind of the...
Same, same scenario. I mean, if I, if, why, if they want to pay in front of my house, why should I pay for the utilities coming into my house? I mean, I've already paid for them once, theoretically. You should help pay for it. And that's virtually the same here, is that, you know, it should be, it's, it's not fair if everybody is paying a utility charge on their utility. It should go some other way when you have a piece of property that's vacant, you know. But yet, I'm sure that when it comes back to being not vacant, whoever it is, I'm sure they're not gonna go back and say, oh, by the way, I want to help support the other guys that, you know, and repay, so. I think you're right. I mean, the, the two clauses, the two ones from Michelle's was the one of both the fairness of the, of the utilities, you know, the 25-75, and the other one is on, you know, Whispering Creek, the water shut off and turned on, it used to be free, now it costs you money.
And that's because they're, they're, they go soft.
Yeah.
So one thing to address with that, if, when council does get a question about that, that statement that it should be split up amongst all of the, we do. 75% of it is covered by the tax, the, the rest of the town, the 25%. And the reason why council did that, through that local improvement policy, was based on the discussion that if you look at that overall project, the water, the sewer, the street, the curb, the gutter, and the sidewalks, about 25% of that benefits the homeowners. The water and sewer running down that street are solely for those people that live on that street. The pavement, the curb, gutter, sidewalks, all of that, those benefit the rest of the general public, and that's why council of the day set that at 75-25. So if somebody does make that statement to you as a, as a counselor, you can confidently say that 75% of it is being covered by, the 25% is, is covered by the local homeowners.
And again, this council can, this fall, when we come to budget, change that policy. We don't have to keep that policy. It's just that, you know, it's gonna affect any projects moving forward, one way or the other, you know, in a negative or positive way. So you, you have that opportunity every year for this council to make that decision, or the counselor, the council of the day. We always talk about the council of the day because we don't want to say, you know, council such and such did this motion, or council such and such did that one, because it's two degrees, it's not totally fair. And on the other hand, it was, they looked at all the things that were in front of them at the day and chose to go in a different direction. If we decide as a council to approve a change in the water rates, the sewer rates, the garbage rates, how we collect them, how we don't, or how we want to take them under, whatever, that's up to us.
So we just wanted to, since Bob didn't attend, he really didn't tell us much other than when he walked away said, I would, I want to bring this up to council. So I don't even know how I would respond to him. So I provided you with the information if he does ask to be on the agenda. Again, you, you do have the background.
So we can either do nothing, you know, or we can try and say, this is what we believe you wanted to bring forward. So probably doing nothing is our better bet, to say, you know, at least we have a bit of an idea why, you know, his concerns, or some of his concerns, but that's not kind of from him, we shouldn't be waiting for him. You know, and we allowed it to be moved to the end of the meeting, just in case for some reason he got hung up on that hail starting or the wind or whatever. So do you, anything else on that one there, or do you want to just let it die for now? Okay, that feel, enjoy?
Just move through it.
Okay, so.
Just receive it for information.
Any motion? I don't know if we have need to, because there was a delegation. Do we need anything?
Oh, I, I would just, if we do, do a motion, and we'll just put a note in there that Administration provided feedback to council as Bob was unable to attend, and then council received it for information.
Okay, did you want to...
Chair, sounds good. How would you say it's that big thing?
Yeah. Okay, does everybody kind of understand that motion? Hearing any discussion, questions? Hearing none on the favor? No, we just need one more motion to Chair, Michelle. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none on the favor? It's Gary, clear official appearance.